I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Commissioner Ulrich is unable to attend today's meeting. He is celebrating a wonderful event in his family as his son graduates from the police academy, I think, in Colorado. So, we'll continue without him. Amendments to the agenda. I do believe we have some amendments to the agenda today.
Yes, we do, Commissioner. We need to pull items 7.6 and 10.2 based on some information that we received from the EQB. The board can take no action on that item today. And then, we are going to have an amendment, just trying to pull the number here because this has changed, to 13.1. We are able to accept the plastic laminate casework scope as that has been worked out in the last two days. So, they're going to bring you an amended resolution for 13.1.
All right. Thank you. Hearing those amendments to pull 7.6, 10.2, and amend 13.1, would someone be willing to move to approve the agenda as amended?
I will make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the agenda with those additions or deletions.
And I'd be happy to second it, Madam Chair.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion on that?
I would just, because we call them numbers, those are the YMCA discussions. So, if you're here for the YMCA, it's, we're not going to go over that today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good, good point. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Next, we'll look at the minutes of the May 7th, 2019 county board meeting. They were distributed in your packet and available online. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Madam Chair, we'd be happy to move the minutes as they were presented in our packet.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the May 7th, 2019 minutes of the county board meeting. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Next, it's time on the agenda to recognize any interested citizens. This time is for folks who are here who have something to talk about that's not on the agenda today. If you're here to address the board on something not on the agenda, please approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll move ahead. Thank you very much. And on to item number five, Scott County delivers. And I believe Chris Harder will get us started.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner. We're here this morning for a Scott County deliver. And we're talking about the work that the environmental and natural resources folks are doing around safe, clean water. And that's certainly a piece of work that the county is involved in that spans our safe and healthy objectives. And it's also part of a public trust, right? That people, people want to believe that the water that they're drinking is safe and healthy for themselves and their children. And so, we're going to talk about that work today with a specific focus on prevention. What you're going to hear over and over today is that prevention is cheaper than trying to remedy a problem. And so, these folks have put together, I think, some good material for us to look at and talk about their work specific to preventing health or safety crises specifically. So, I'm going to ask you to introduce yourselves, then I'll ask the panel members to introduce themselves, and then Mr. Nelson is going to do a little overview for us.
Good morning. My name is Cindy Geis, and I'm the Community Services Director.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Schultz, and I'm the Enterprise Risk Manager in the Office of Management and Budget.
Good morning. Suzanne Aronson, Child Welfare Manager.
Good morning. Marty Schmitz, County Zoning Administrator.
Good morning. Ryan Holzer in the Natural Resources Department.
Good morning. Melissa Bogman, Senior Water Resources Planner in Natural Resources.
Kate Zalachek, the Waste Program Supervisor.
Paul Nelson, Environmental Services Director. And I want to introduce one other person. Jim Swangler is here. He's the Chair of our Advisory Committee for our watershed issues.
Thank you for doing that. All right. You want to start us off, Paul?
Sure. It was about 10 years ago, and I went to Nigeria to look at water issues in Nigeria. And I was in the community of Dumne, and they had an open pit well, two hand pumps for 10,000 people, and both hand pumps were broken. And so, I asked where a number of people got their water, and they said, "Well, there's a ditch that's about a mile away that they walk to." And sure enough, about a week before I was there, people had actually died of cholera. That's an extreme example. We don't have that issue here because of prevention activities. And so, I think that I want to use that real quickly for just a few examples of prevention. One is, I bet most of it, nobody got up this morning and worried about getting cholera. So, prevention is somewhat invisible. If you're doing a good job of it, you don't see it, is one point I'd like to make. Also, the fact that we don't have cholera, or typhoid, or some of those other waterborne diseases prevail in the community is a result of collective action. So, it's not just, you know, staff that are sitting here. We also have Met Council who is treating wastewater and disinfecting it before discharging to prevent pathogens being out in water resources. We also have the cities who provide clean water to a number of residents. We have standards from the Health Department on how wells are supposed to be constructed to keep them safe. So, there's a collective action kind of thing going on, in addition to Kate and her team making sure that septic systems are working and functioning and not putting extraordinary amounts of pathogens out into our community. This makes things very challenging for measuring, and you'll see, we have actually been, we're scientists, so by nature, we deal with data. We understand our data might be a little more technical than some of the other times, but we've been dealing with data, we have had measures since I've been here. So, some of our efforts are rather mature. Other efforts are still maturing because of the Scott County delivers, and we've been adding to that. But a couple of things is, you don't want to wait till you have cholera to take action. It's kind of late. And so, you want to have measures that you capture and inform decisions before you get to these problems and avoid them. Prevention is cheaper than cleaning up after the fact, and that's true also for the flooding side of things. Keeping things out of harm's way to begin with, having our floodplain regulations where we keep homes elevated above flood zones is a good part of that. We also deal with a very long timeframe. For a lot of pollutants, there is a lag time. For surface water, it's really about 10 years between when you take action and when you start seeing results. For groundwater, it could be 10 years to 100 years to thousands of years. Again, it points out how important prevention is, because if you're going to clean something up that has that timeframe too, it's going to be very long. And then, we also have lots of variables. We are not only dealing with the amount of rainfall, which is highly variable, we are dealing with the types of soils, the types of vegetation, the slope of the land, temperature, and social stuff. Lot of avoiding things is people taking action themselves. So, we have to be in the social side. And on page two of the document, we've kind of put together our graphic there of our kind of monitoring measurement system where we are trying to collect measures along the whole continuum of early on in terms of people's attitudes towards doing things with their own lives or their own properties to prevent things happening, to the whole collective impact part of it, where we have some surrogate measures. And frequently here, this is where measures of how much regulatory compliance we have is a surrogate measure versus, on the far side, the actual measures or outcomes in the water bodies themselves that we're trying to manage. What is groundwater quality? What is the surface water quality because of that lag time? So, we have measures across that whole continuum. Now, will, big questions from the panel and anybody else.
Thank you very much for doing that. Panel, would you like to start, please?
I have a question. First of all, the information is great. Thank you for putting it together. I mean, it does tell a story. Some of the information that I was looking at, I just have a couple of questions on, to begin with, on page 16, when we're looking at the generator, hazardous waste generator significant violations. I see, you know, a graph, and I'm not entirely certain what's triggering some of the, some of the movement on the graph. I was expecting it to maybe be a little bit more strategic, and I understand that there was some employee issues where we weren't able to make some of the inspections timely enough. But can you talk about, number one, I mean, how many, how many current licenses out there? And what should be the trend level that we should see, or what's the standard? How many, how often should these things get inspected? And what's some of the ramifications of them not getting inspected?
Kate, I'm going to ask you.
Yeah, okay. I feel like I can address this best. So, for those of you that are perceiving this chart, let me just explain it a little bit because it's a bit complicated. It's a lot of information. So, this left-hand side, the Y-axis, it says average number of years since the last inspection. So, that is, on average, that's about the last time a business that generates hazardous waste was inspected by our office. That's also that blue bar. So, you can see in 2005, when the inspector went out and visited the businesses in 2005, it had been about a year and a half since that business was last inspected. That's what that means. Then, on the right-hand side, the Y-axis, it says significant violations. So, that's a percentage, and that's that red line that's kind of going up and down. So, what we're looking at here, what we're trying to evaluate is, we believe that the more frequently we visit a business, the less likely they're going to have a significant violation. When we go out and do inspections, it's code enforcement, true, but it's a lot of education and information on what it means to be in compliance, and most generators are businesses. We should call them generators. They're businesses that generate hazardous waste, or businesses in the county that want to be in compliance. They want to be safe. So, when they get the information, they're usually very likely to be in compliance. So, what you are seeing here is, back to your question, Cindy, how often should we be getting out there? The large generators, we should be out there once a year, once every two years. The larger, or the smaller generators, we call them, our minimals are our very smalls. Think like your, your local mechanic. More to three to, yeah, about three. Five is pretty long. And if you can see, so, from 2014 to 2018, we're not getting out there on average, you know, five to eight years. So, we, you would, we would expect that, that significant violations would be going up higher. We believe that it isn't simply because we're getting out to those businesses that we know of. We've been out there. Our concern is, what about all the businesses out there in Scott County that we aren't able to get to? We're behind on getting to the generators we know, and there's a lot more others out there. So, we think if we were getting out to those new businesses, that significant trend would probably be much, would be going, increasing, not decreasing.
So, Kate, in your opinion, is the reason that there's such the gap or the longer span between getting out there a resource issue staff, or what, what do you attribute to that?
My opinion is that our HHW, the demand at the HHW, and our demand for inspectors out doing septic inspections is pulling the staff to two programs that are in such high demand that they don't have the time to get out and do these hazardous waste inspections. We used to say, "Okay, well, we'll wait and get out and do these hazardous waste inspections in the slow period," which is the winter when the ground froze. It just doesn't seem to be that now, in the wintertime, that happens, that we have a downtime. We just go year-round now.
Just add a little bit to it. That said, we've had in our own goals each year to increase the number of inspections, and we have. But the number of businesses and so forth increasing at the same time, still a gap.
For people who aren't familiar with the inspection process, could you just give us like one example? Like, if we're here to talk about safe water today, like, what is a, what is a compliance violation that you would hold worry about, like, contaminating the water? Like, what would you, what would one of your inspectors see that would tell you there's a risk?
Sure. So, I was thinking of that. I was thinking, you know, how would I best explain a significant violation?
Yeah.
So, when the inspector goes out to the business, they're looking to make sure that containers that hold hazardous waste are labeled correctly, that they're closed. Okay, those would probably be, aren't maybe what we would call significant. It's important. But what we would probably call significant is if someone was improperly handing their waste, they're putting their hazardous waste, they're sewer-ing it, and so, now it's getting in, potentially getting into groundwater. That's probably a more significant. Or they're spilling their hazardous waste outside and not cleaning it up.
Okay.
And that has the potential for contam, groundwater contamination too. Those are our more significant violations that we're looking for.
Okay. So, chemicals, solvents, any of those kinds of things?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And can I just clarify for Cindy's question? So, is there kind of a sweet spot? Like, you said you have set goals to do more frequent, is there sort of a sweet spot where that levels off in your view?
Well, we, like I said, we would like to get to those small and large generators every, every year and get to those minimals and very smalls every three to five.
Okay.
I think what our goal is really going to be is to find those new businesses that have moved into the county, and I just really couldn't tell you what that number is that we're looking for. We'd like to get out there more routinely.
Yep.
And how many are out there that we need to go find? I wouldn't say.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a sense of what neighboring counties, what the number of inspections look like, or the time between inspections?
So, the other metro counties have, they, they're just set up a little differently that they have hazardous waste inspectors. That's, that's all they do. Where we do, our staff is cross-trained, where they have to work in multiple different programs, septic, HHW. So, it's only when time allows where the other metro counties, they have one or two staff that are assigned to just do hazardous waste inspections. So, that's how we're different from the other metro. Thanks.
So, with that, Kate, because we aren't, we don't have a single incumbent, or a person, a job that just, that's all that these people do, these staff that do, is our non-compliance rate, or are we, do we have, do we have factors that are affecting our groundwater or our soils at a higher level in comparison? Or do we not have the data to really share across county borders saying, because we're doing things differently, we have some higher-risk environmental issues in our county?
Okay. So, here's my thoughts on that. I don't think that we're higher-risk. Dakota County has more groundwater concerns than we do, but that's because of some history they have with some contamination sites and so on that we don't have in Scott County. I believe that Scott County's approach with their businesses is a little different than some of your larger metro where those inspectors go out, they have their checklist, they, "Are you in compliance? Are you not? Here's your violation. Correct it." And then, they're on to the next. In Scott County, we have a little bit more of a different approach where we go in and we want to be, we want to provide education, we want to provide the information, and we want to make a connection so that they know that they can call us if they have any questions. So, our approach, I think, keeps us at a lower risk where they, they actually oftentimes call us and ask us what's taking us so long to get out and inspect them, because we have this trust built with them that, that we're all just trying to get to the same goal of compliance. So, I don't think that we're at a higher risk. But I actually, I'm stumbling over it because I don't have any data that shows our significant violations compared to Dakota or Hennepin. I don't know if we're higher in non-compliance or not. I don't have that data to know for sure.
But anecdotally, you're seeing some nice results from approaching it from an education and partnership kind of.
I think that's the best approach. Yes. Perfect.
So, looking at page 17, I'm assuming this is the, what's dropped off at the household hazardous waste in terms of materials. And so, I just am wondering, from a, from your perspective, clearly, it looks like an increase in how much is coming in through the household hazardous waste. Steadily has increased over the last 15 years with a spike in 17 and then a bit of a decrease in 18. Just can talk a little bit about why you think that is? Is that because of education? Is that because of what staff's doing? Or am I reading this completely wrong?
The continued increase?
Yeah.
The continued increase, I think, is because, one, Scott County itself is growing, and so, we have, you know, we're continuing to increase, and as these people move into Scott County, they need to find a place to dispose of their waste. So, one, I think, is just because generally, Scott County is growing. I do think it's, people are more aware that their hazardous, chemicals don't go in the garbage anymore. That's just their, you know, that's the community's social behavior. They know to be looking into that. I think that we are trying to get the word more out, out more, our department, that the HHW is available. This is what we do. We're trying to promote it more, and when we do promote it, we do get, you know, a spike increase. And then, I just want to note, that little peak in 2017, we think that's because we, we shut down for construction for about six months. So, what happened is, everyone kind of came in right before we closed, and then, right again when we opened, which happened in 17.
Okay.
And I'd like to add also to this. If you look at it closely, the increase is largely in two things, appliances and e-waste. The actual amount of hazardous waste has remained relatively steady or increased rather slowly, but a lot of that is, is in e-waste. And a lot of it's because they don't have good places, other places to take it. Which is interesting, we're not mandated to take either one.
What are types of materials that people can't drop off that come to the HHW? And if you can't take them, what's their referral on where they should be taking them? And is there any type of thought about us expanding what we do take? And I know there's probably a storage issue, but can you talk a little bit about what, what unmet needs are out there?
Yes. We've, one is just the continued demand. And one of our projects with the U of M Resilient Communities, we had an industrial engineering class come out, and they took a look at the number of participants that have come to the facility over time, and we see the same, same type of exponential curve, and they've projected that by 2030, we'll have probably about a 325% increase in, in demand. We don't have space to, to grow and handle more. There is also push at the legislature to increase recycling. So, you know, if we could take more recycled products, not necessarily hazardous waste, that would help us toward meeting mandated or state pushed recycling goals. We are in conversation with Dakota County about a joint facility. They, they are in the same situation, if not worse, in terms of their facility for household hazardous waste is handling about 70,000 participants a year, and it's designed for 15. So, they're looking for a second site, and we're in conversation with them to see if we can't get that along the 35 corridor so it could serve some of the residents on the east side of Scott County. Some of the recycling things that there is a push for are other problematic appliances or e-waste where there's not other good options for people to get rid of it, would be mattresses and carpets would be, and some of the other things. But again, we're not mandated as a household hazardous waste to take that, but we also have separate solid waste management goals handed to us from the state.
On page 20, you have your septic system replacement program. And I have a staff member that helps out in this area, so I know a little bit, a little bit about it. But I'm looking at 2018. First of all, there's a decrease in, in how many septic systems actually had assistance, and question is, is, number one, is that because there just wasn't as many septic systems that needed replacement? Or they didn't qualify for funding? Or they wanted funding and the funding wasn't available? So, I was just curious as to, does the funding that we have at the state that is given to the county, doesn't meet the needs that we currently have to, to replace those septic systems? And if not, are there alternatives for these folks? Or how do they get their septic systems replaced if they need to be? So, multiple questions.
If I can just piggyback quickly on that, because I, and I just had questions around the criteria for those loans and those grants, and are they income-based, and what does that look like? So, maybe just...
And the real expert is back there, I'm here, Mary Von Eschen on that. So, back to the first questions, there are the two programs. The grants are to us by the Clean Water Fund, where someone at the state agency said, "Across the state, we got all kinds of septic systems that are failing or straight pipes. We really need to get that fixed." And so, they made grant of money available to counties for us to use with low-income folks. And so, there are requirements for that for low-income. What we do with it in order to stretch it is, we don't pay for the whole system. We'll pay for, I think, a quarter of it to, to bring the cost down for replacing the system on that. And the reason why I think things are down this year, or last year, was not so much demand, but it was wet. And so, stuff didn't get constructed as much as in other years. You know, the construction has to be done during dry weather, or the soils get damaged, and then, the system is then damaged. The loans is money that we, we get, it's kind of a revolving loan process from the Department of Agriculture. And then, when stuff is repaid, it goes back to the Department of Agriculture, and they can make further loans. We charge a little bit of interest, and that goes to cover our staff time for coordinating that effort. And I don't know if I missed anything.
Are the funds sufficient? Is there a need for more funding from the state?
It's a good question. I mean, even when we started the loan program, we had long conversations with administration as to, a lot of these people could afford to actually do it on their own, but they choose to do it as a loan because it limits the payment they have in any particular year, not to, you know, 15,000 or 20,000 all at once. They can spread it out. So, a lot of folks that are getting loans could probably afford to do it without the loan they're choosing to do it because it spreads the payment out. In terms of looking at the demand, you look at the previous graph, you do see we are increasing the number of systems that are in compliance over time, and that's steadily going up. And, and that's what we want to see, is that basically the systems out there are meeting current standards, and the trend is in that direction.
Can you talk a little bit, Paul, about that, Brett? How do you determine that? Is that, it looks like over on the left-hand side, that a lot of that comes from property sales? Is that the only way you're getting that data, or is there other?
I'm going to refer that to Kate. In order, I will say, in order to keep a data set clean, that's the only data that's in here, because if we mix it in, you can't, you can't really mix two data sets to then have a trend line, but...
The, the compliance inspections can come from, can be triggered by either a sale of property or someone is requesting a building permit from our office, and we've reviewed the files, and we've determined by the lack of information and age of the septic system that a compliance inspection is required. And so, in order to get that permit, they have to go do that. So, there's a couple of things that could trigger the need for a compliance inspection on a septic system.
So, but if, so if they're not selling their property, or they're not getting a permit, is there any requirement around having that septic system checked every now and then? Or is it, "I'm in my house for 40 years. I'm not selling it. I'm not getting a building permit. I don't have any requirement to have it checked."
Not a requirement for a compliance inspection, but they are required to maintain it. So, they should be getting it pumped and checked. they should be getting it pumped and checked.
We do, the haulers are required to report to us when systems are pumped and Pete, who's behind you, maintains those records. If we have evidence that a system is not in compliance, then they do get put on a list. If they're just basically a failing system, they have ten years to replace it or if they come up failing on these third-party ones. And part of that's because to give people time that if they're in an area that's going to be annexed and to get water in sewer, that they don't pay twice within an area, you know, timeframe to do that. If it's an imminent health system, which means it has a surface discharge, they have to cease discharge immediately. And in a lot of those cases, they have to pump their tank until they have a system replaced.
Curious about what kind of partnerships? So, certainly from social service, we work with a lot of licensed providers, childcare, foster care and so do you have any sort of cross coordination with the licensing unit around providers who may have challenges with their septic system?
We do. That would be Mary Van Esch and she's our contact for daycare licensing when someone comes in to get a license for daycare, they coordinate just by email. Hi, someone is here interested, can you, you know, can I direct them to you? And then Mary would, or any of the septic inspectors would look at the status of the septic system and just coordinate back if they see any concerns or if they're requesting a compliance inspection be done on the septic system.
Can we go to page twenty-one, please? So, I'm wondering, so your team selected four lakes in Scott County and I wonder when you look at this data, what does it tell you about the safety of those lakes, given the data presented on this chart?
I'm going to start and then Melissa's going to think of the real answer while I'm talking.
We'll be interested in that.
Bottom line, this is presenting water clarity and water clarity is a function of whether there's sediment in the water column that's making the water turbid or if there's algae, algae is a plant that can grow and in more productive, more polluted lakes, it grows thicker and will mess up the turbidity or the clarity. In reality, clarity has little connection to either health or safety, it's purely an aesthetic type of thing. That said, there can be conditions where lakes are so productive that they grow blue-green algae and they'll grow it in a quantity such that blue-green algae produces toxic compounds. And there have been cases, even in the county here, where we've had pets die from toxicity from blue-green algae, but that's not really what clarity is measuring, that's sort of an extreme string place. It's really not connected to health or safety, it's more an aesthetic.
Okay, thanks.
That people swimming will look at the water and go, yuck, I'm not going in there.
But it's not unsafe.
Right. Unless it gets to that real extreme level with the blue-green. And in those cases, we do typically put out notices around August when the water, when you get the dog days of summer for those lakes that are subject to that. And then in terms of what the data is telling us here, Melissa, do you have any thoughts on what the graph is telling us overall?
Well, it also gives me an indication of, especially if we were to see clarity really increase one year, what happened in that lake? You know, do we have an invasive species like a zebra muzzle like upper and lower prior lakes do have? Or is what we've been doing around the lake and the watershed working so much that that clarity increased? So, there's certain things that it can possibly tell us if we do see a big change in it. But I can tell you that with Cedar Lake, I do get a call every year from somebody around the lake that they see this blue-green algae and they ask, you know, can I go in the water? And I tell them, we would recommend that you don't until you don't see it anymore because it can be toxic. There's certain lakes that we do typically get a call on that say they're seeing it or they're smelling this really bad smell, what is this stuff? And so, we typically tell them it's blue-green algae.
But you would also monitor this data, going back to your earlier point, you would also monitor this data yearly to see if there are changes in the water clarity or how often do you guys look at that?
We monitor it annually.
This is a, in the county, there are, water management responsibilities are very fragmented. We, as the county, the board chose in around two thousand to become the watershed organization for the Scott WMO and that's about seventy percent of the county. Middle part of the county is in the Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District and so the monitoring done on Spring Lake and Prior Lake is done by them actually, so we don't do all this, but we do look at their data.
So, can, I'm sorry, do you mind? So, can you, like, knowing that, that the cities do a piece of it and the county does a piece of it and are, like, what is the, what is the overall picture of water quality in Scott County? If you look at county, cities, who coordinates that data and what would you say about the overall quality?
Let me ask, how much time, how much time do we have? When you ask the overall state, are you, overall state of data management, the overall state of the resource?
The overall state of the resource. If I'm a citizen, I care about the quality of water in Scott County.
The overall state of the resources, we have a number of water bodies in the county that are listed as water quality impaired based on standards that have come out of the Clean Water Act. We don't put a lot of that in here because it is very complex. There's a different standard for phosphorus, there's a different standard for clarity, there's a different standard for chloroidal A, which is a measure of algae, different standard for arsenic, chloride, on and on and on. And it's the state that develops that list. So, Sand Creek has a number of impairments, Credit River has one impairment for chloride, Spring Lake has met its standards now that they've been doing some treatments and I expect it might be removed for excessive nutrients. We've had, O'Dowd Lake is not listed for anything. Cedar Lake is listed as impaired for nutrients and so forth. So, surface waters, we have a lot of issues, most of those are aesthetic or they affect the aquatic lives, the biota of that, more so than public health. Sand Creek and some of the others are different branches are listed for having high levels of bacteria. So, there are some, some water bodies that. We don't use surface water in Scott County for drinking water, we use groundwater. In general, groundwater is in good condition or we used to say that. For nitrates, which is what we measure most frequently, we don't really have an issue. Monitoring that we did this last year, Melissa uncovered, there are some issues with arsenic, which is naturally elevated.
Okay, can you talk about arsenic?
Exactly.
Yeah, I guess my question is just more just on slide twenty-three. Obviously, there's a pretty substantial increase around the arsenic, so can you tell me sort of what that means, what's potential impact, especially if we're talking exposure to young children?
I'll start and then I'll let Melissa start. It's not necessarily an increase, it's that we only monitored it for the first time last year. So, it may have been there for a while. Department of Health has been requiring new wells that have been installed since two thousand eight to monitor for it. So, the map in the back on the next page includes those results going all the way back to two thousand eight and you can see there's kind of a cluster in the middle of the county. And even talking to the Department of Health, that isn't necessarily new. They found that about statewide, about seventeen percent of wells do have elevated levels of arsenic and that it's mostly when it's in a glacial till material, so glacial deposited sediment type of stuff rather than bedrock material, so shallower wells. That's our next step that we're going to take with this is see if we can't correlate some of this with well depth and so forth besides getting the word out on it. But as for the health impacts, it's arsenic is a known carcinogen and Melissa, you have, Melissa knows more about this although we've only really been looking at arsenic for the last six months, so.
And we just monitored for it last year because we didn't know that we should have monitored for it in the past when we were doing our watershed plan update. A member from the Department of Health came to one of our technical advisory committee meetings and said, you should monitor for arsenic, so we added that to the list.
So, are all rural wells being tested or is this just certain? And then my, more around process questions around how often are they tested, are they required to be tested?
The only wells that have requirements for testing are those that are community wells or municipal wells or use for family daycare type, there's requirements for that. The rest of it is, when it's a new well, it's required and the rest of it is voluntary. Or we do a special study about every five years where we try to get a sample across the unincorporated areas of the county to do some testing.
Can you tell me, Paul, what's the, what are some of the methods you use to get this word out to people with wells to let them know that there was a finding in two thousand eighteen and that would behoove them to whether or not, you know, they're sent a sample, something for them to take a sample of their well and send it into, is it the state or how do we get this word out to say, you know, we really want to be cognizant of some issues that we were just uncovered and we would like you to be proactive in testing your own well?
Yeah, that's a very good question and I'd say that's part of prevention too, is getting people to take their own initiative to protect their own health. We routinely have articles in the scene about getting your well tested. In the past, we haven't highlighted arsenic, we will be doing more of that. Jessie in the middle of the room here just created a webpage for us on arsenic and Melissa's getting postcards ready to go out to the townships where we have this and then we can refer them to our website, which then again has links to Department of Health website. We also, the cluster, there's a cluster right around Cedar Lake, we have a relationship with the Cedar Lake Improvement District, so Melissa's coordinating with them to get it to their distribution list to let people know to do that. For the testing that she did last year with the wells that we did get results for, she gave those results back to each of the families that did send water in. We have, for nitrates, we also have a clinic where we set up a test machine, people bring their water in, there's quite a bit there. We also sell test kits at the service counter for folks who want to get their water tested and they can choose from a variety of parameters to do that. So, number of things, we're ramping up the efforts on arsenic and we've also brought this up with our technical advisory committee meeting and fortunately, we had some township supervisors there and they're very interested in getting it posted at their town halls and in whatever newsletters and things that they have as well.
Do you know, is there any state or federal funding that would maybe be available for us to send or allow people to have these kits at a no cost to try to get at least our baseline for every well within the county? And I know that that's a large endeavor, but if it's financial for some people or they just don't know, I'm looking for some additional methods that isn't going to cost us an arm and a leg to get this information. Do you know?
I mean, we, you know, sell the test kits, they're not terribly expensive, you know, the WMO, other watershed organizations in the county could offset some of those costs. I think the larger cost issue would be for arsenic is the treatment. If you have it in your well, it's naturally caused as a treatment and there is, you can get it under the counter treatment system that's reverse osmosis or something, but the cost is going to be a hundred to two hundred dollars. For that, there is the potential with the clean water funds, it was part of the conversation this year at the legislature to start having some financial assistance through the Department of Health. So, there is potential, program hasn't fleshed out yet to provide some financial assistance for folks to get treatment. Of course, locally, you know, we could choose to do that as well. Would we set it up the same as we do with the septic where it's for low-income folks? One of the things that has been interesting to me as we've gone down this road and Melissa can build on this, is when we've had conversations with a number of people, they've said, oh yeah, we know and they have treatment. Or when we talked to the Department of Health, they said, yeah, we've gotten word out to people and just routinely, a third of the people just ignore us.
Is there anything your team needs from other areas of the county, social services or public health to help with that communication effort? It sounds like you have a lot of different strategies, but do you need, what do you need from partners here?
Well, we are putting an article in this next scene on arsenic and indicated, and Jessie wrote that, indicating what some of the health effects are, so we're hoping to get that, some of that information out to people in front of their face, but I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I think it'd just be, you know, people who live in the, you know, encourage their neighbors, do it for them, their own families and spread the word of what they're learning.
I wonder if we could shift gears for a few minutes into looking at development and runoff and those topics? So, I'm looking at page thirty. I wonder if some of, if someone could walk through this slide and just talk with us about, like, what data in this slide tells you that some of the policies are working? In your narrative, it said, when we look at this, we see our policies on runoff seem to be working and I wonder if somebody can tell me where that shows up in your data?
I'll take this and then maybe Ryan can add some thoughts. This is, it's a measure that I saw a professor do a few years ago and I thought that'd be really useful for us to dive into and it actually is quite a bit of work to get to. Essentially, what we're doing is Met Council operates stream gauges on Sand Creek and Credit River and that measures the amount of flow in those rivers and they've been doing that since the early nineties. And runoff in the creeks is a function of, you know, the soil type and the watershed, the amount of rainfall that you can get, how much evaporation happens, it takes away from that. What this does is it takes the cumulative amount of runoff measured at those stations and then divides it by the amount of rainfall that we had that year. So, it takes out, takes out of that one of the variables that we have the least control over and it leaves, what it leaves is a function of what's going on the land, i.e. land use and evaporation is the two things affecting this ratio. So, the number in there is essentially the percent of precipitation that makes it as runoff going out of that watershed. Now, we know that as we develop, particularly in denser urban environments, we put down hard surfaces and that prevents water from going down into the soil and we have had a number of standards, it really got heated up in the two thousands, late nineties to mitigate some of that increase in runoff because, you know, while we're setting homes to be out of the floodplain, well, maybe the floodplain's getting larger because we're getting more runoff because we're covering the soil with hard surfaces and the water can't go in or doesn't evaporate, it runs off. So, my thought when looking at this, this could tell us whether or not our efforts to manage that increase in runoff from new development are working or not if it's, you know, flat, we're not increasing, it's one of those prevention things, flat being somewhat invisible, that what we're doing to prevent runoff increasing from new development is at least holding its own. What makes it difficult in this situation is at the same time since early two thousands, early nineteen hundreds, precipitation's been going up at the same time and while we divide through with it, in this case, it's not necessarily linear, there's still wet conditions, the wetter conditions you have, the more runoff you get even so. But we find this very positive that when we look at the orange, which is Sand Creek, it's actually going down a little bit and in Credit River, it's really staying flat. Now, Credit River area is savage, Credit River Township was some of the fastest growing areas in the country urban-wise in the early two thousands and we're not seeing an increase in the percent of runoff. It tells us that those strategies for holding water with new developments going, is to some extent, working on a large scale. some extent, working on a large scale. And I'll get into scale in just a second. But we went further and we looked at in the Credit River, okay, what's doing this? And we found that since the 1990s, there's actually been, if we look at the areas of topography and everything, 350 new detention ponding areas have been created because of the standards. And that's holding the water and it seems to be working on a large scale. What's not really working very well is at a small scale. Backyards are getting wetter because we are having more precipitation and more runoff. It's sort of the collective thing that's working well. Old tile lines are failing and with the increased runoff, we're seeing wet conditions and we're seeing people call commissioners quite frequently with concerns and complaints and so forth. So, there's the small scale, we're seeing lots of issues because of the increased rainfall. And the infrastructure at small scale isn't the same as the size infrastructure we're seeing at the large scale. Sorry, that was very technical.
Good one.
Thank you.
To touch on to what Paul said, when he was talking about development and trying to mitigate some of the hard surfaces and being able to infiltrate more water, on page 26, it relates back to our cost share program. And a big emphasis that we've been putting on practices is perennial vegetation or things that can help slow down runoff or infiltrate the water. And you'll notice in about 2013, the ecological, the green, those are more your runoff reducing projects, where you have perennial vegetation, you're converting over an agricultural field to native prairie, putting in a filter strip along a stream. Or also soil health, it's the pink, it's on the very top. You can see it's very slight, it started in 2015 and it's starting to grow. That's a very new program and that's where we're integrating cover crops into an agricultural field too. So, you still have ag, but then you incorporate a perennial vegetation with it. So, we've been, you know, doing that too with our cost share program, trying to get more into the preventative perennial vegetation that would help with runoff as well.
Ryan, on this slide that you have here, is there, you know, I'm looking at the master county of the rural area and saying, "Okay, when can, where can we put our efforts toward prevention and trying to mitigate some of these things that we're seeing with additional precipitation?" And it looks like this is when people call you or call the Soil and Water District and say, "I have this need," or "What programs do you have available?" Are there other types of outreach types of things that are initiated by you or by the Soil and Water District to try to make people aware that there are programs that may benefit them and may help mitigate or provide a solution in the near term or even long term for them that they're just unaware of?
Yes, good question. Page 28, we talk about the different types of projects that we have. So, some of them are preventative, some are corrective. The preventative are more your runoff reducing practices and we'll do a lot of marketing or mailings to specific watersheds where we know we want to reduce runoff. So, we've been fortunate enough to have a grant that actually lets us go outside of Scott County's boundaries up into Rice and La Sure for the Sand Creek watershed. And we know that reducing runoff in those areas would be beneficial. So, we can target those for the preventative practices. The corrective practices are more when somebody calls in and they notice an issue and they want it fixed. And so, there is differences, but we try to basically take the folks that are coming in the door and help them, but also then seek out areas that we know would be beneficial for a watershed and try to get practices in those areas. So, sort of the difference between what a preventative and corrective practice would be.
And is there funding from the state and federal government to help pay for both corrective and preventative or only one?
Correct. So, with any grants that we have, most of them are probably a 75-25 split where the funds are coming from state or federal partners and then local funds are the 25% match. But they would cover both practices so we can identify preventative or corrective practices so that way we can still administer this to any landowners that are either coming in the door to correct something or that we can reach out and try to get practices on the ground.
And we've made some other programmatic changes as well. Staff gets sort of tired of correcting self-inflicted things sometimes. That in order to get funding for a corrective practice now, you as a farmer also have to implement in the watershed to that practice, the upstream preventive practices.
And just to add on to what Ryan was saying too, the WMO and SWCD puts in throughout the year in the county scene about 30-some articles. A lot of them have to do with different programs that we offer and saying if anybody needs assistance or wants more information, to come, call the SWCD.
On the preventative versus the corrective? Because my question was, have you considered or thought about or been able to do any tracking or data around the savings versus doing preventative instead of doing the backend corrective? Is that, have you looked at that?
Yes, so we do, it's a metric that we keep track of. So, we've essentially identified a threshold of a practice. It could be corrective or preventative. And the thresholds can be different because there's different things that we're trying to achieve with a runoff reducing practice versus a corrective practice. So, we've essentially set up a threshold that if the price per pound of phosphorus or ton of sediment or acre foot of runoff reduction is at or below this threshold, it's either a good project or a project that maybe needs a little bit more review. And so, we've set up different levels in terms of if it comes in below that, the project is more likely streamlined for approvals. If it comes in above that number, then it might go through multiple reviews and a little more scrutiny of whether it is a good project to pursue or not.
Let me add to that just real quickly though. But to get at your question of cost effectiveness between the two types, it's probably not really doable because the preventive practices focus on reducing runoff. Because runoff is the transport for pollutants. And also the higher runoff that you have, the more erosion that you have versus corrective practices focus on controlling erosion. So, the parameters that you calculate for the two types of practices are actually different measures. So, this makes it difficult to compare them.
Marty, is there data that you get from these folks that plays into decisions you make about zoning or land use or permits? What part of the work they're doing is most helpful to you?
All of it.
Okay. Good, that's good.
A number of the standards that these folks utilize reside within the zoning regulations. Floodplain requirements, shoreland requirements, all of our stormwater requirements, structure setbacks to bluffs and wetlands, all those requirements rely on the zoning arts. And so, when somebody comes in and applies for a plat to subdivide their property, that triggers a lot of these reviews on that particular site. So, we look at those sites, we look at those lots to make sure those house locations are in proper areas where we're not going to have flooding issues in the future. We make sure that there's property erosion control being put in place during the construction. We make sure that the stormwater practices are put in place to help reduce that stormwater, clean it up, those sorts of things. So, it's a very coordinated process when we get an application for some.
So, do you, do you have, do you have the data you need? Like, I can imagine someone comes in, they want to build a house on this exact spot. And you all might see an issue with building the house on this exact spot. And so, do you have the data you need to, like, sort of know how far back is safe or how far back is good? You know, like, how do you set those thresholds for the regulations?
And these folks can respond to that too, but they're essentially set during the plotting process. We have the developer identify 100-year flood elevations for water bodies that are out there because a number of them, we don't have that information today. So, when they subdivide property, we get that information so we know that well floor has to be one foot above that elevation that's set. And we make sure that there's a location on that property where somebody can meet those requirements. We also make sure that they do soil borings and perk tests on a property and make sure there's property in alternate drain field sites there. So, we do have the information on these plotted sites when they come in for development, yeah.
Okay.
I would say that the one area that, we have some standards that we don't really know how correct they are is the bluffs. So, we do have a 50-foot setback for a home from a bluff. We've had that since 2006. That's not a long timeframe to judge whether 50 feet is the right distance or not. 2014, we had big rains, we had some landslides. We had one home that we built, bought out, but we don't have data to go and say, "Is 50 feet the right, you know, distance?" And some of that depends on the slope of that bluff, the materials in that bluff, whether there are springs or seeps in that bluff that are sort of lubricating the soil. That we may find that over time, we are seeing more slides closer to home and staff may approach the board and say, "We need a bigger safety factor on that one." Because we don't want homes falling, you know, in places. But 50 feet may be enough. It's, we just don't have a long track record. And those types of events, landslides are episodic, not something that happens every day that we can measure. They may only happen once every 10, 20, or 40 years with very large rainfall events.
Chris, that was the one question I wanted to ask as you were going down that road. And it was to Marty, it was 31. He's been awfully quiet over there. But Paul is right, there was a house approached that we bought out. We've had another one approach us who sits in a bluff type of area that we really can't do anything about. When we talk about 50% of our plats being revised or changes, what types of changes, Marty, are you doing to protect us from those types of situations and to help make sure that we protect? And what are you doing in those areas?
So, with this particular measure, there's a number of factors that come into whether there's infrastructure changes or not. Oftentimes, it's just sheer size of the plat or the number of lots that are being created. And what we're looking at are things like transportation needs, expansion of roads, turn lanes, interconnectivity of properties, so we have local road access to adjacent properties and interconnected streets. We're also looking at things such as stormwater management here and reviewing the practices that are being put in place. Webline delineations are getting reviewed to make sure that they're consistent with the Webline Conservation Act. We're also looking at floodplain requirements, that's a big one, because we don't have a great deal of 100-year flood elevations for these smaller water bodies that are out in the rural area. So, a number of the changes that we are requiring on plats, infrastructure-wise, are more so related to stormwater and roads. We do get somewhat into bluffs. We had a plat come forward to us at a DRT level here last year where somebody actually wants to build a road up the Minnesota River Bluff to serve some lots. The argument is, there'd be great views, there'd be awesome building sites, but there are significant concerns when it comes to protection of those home sites in the future because of those bluffs. And as Paul said, you know, maybe some bluffs, 50 feet is just fine. You've got a fairly stable situation where you don't have water seeping through the soil. But in other areas, what is enough? 100 feet, 200 feet? It's very difficult to determine some of that.
So, that was one of my questions and it's because we're facing it, I think, on County Road 51. Somebody must, might love their view down at the bottom of 51, but we spend more money per cap on that road than probably any other. And so, when we're looking at that, are you looking at things like, "We're never going to be able to maintain a road up that bluff." It might be a great view, but if the costs of the transportation are so significant, are we looking at that and how that's going to be provided and when we're giving feedback on something like that?
Yes, we are looking at that. We do have some standards in the ordinance for what percent slope that they can actually disturb on a bluff. Also, in these situations, it's oftentimes a township street that people are looking at, so the township engineer is taking a real close look at that also. With the advice of people like Paul in our natural resources office, our Soil and Water Conservation District is providing assistance in those areas too. So, yeah, that is being looked at.
Just very quickly, add that to a large extent, I feel we have good existing standards for development that's occurring now. Most of the problems we had are with stuff that was built before we had standards. And those are probably the phone calls that most of you get, is a home that was probably built somewhere where it shouldn't have been and now is getting wetter. And so, those are the ones that we struggle with actually from phone call perspective and complaint perspective, is stuff that was built before we had standards.
Before we turn it over to the audience, I just wanted to ask the panel, is there anything that you, is there any concern or any emerging need that we haven't talked about already this morning that you just want to speak to? Anything that you are worried about or keeps you up at night is some of the wording we used in some of the planning meetings, but are there any emerging needs that you just want to speak to and kind of give people a heads up about?
I've dominated, so I'll let them.
A big one would be the precipitation increase in that, you know, like Paul saying, before we had standards, things maybe were built in not the correct place. And if that continues, you know, the standards might need to adapt to that continuing trend. And we've noticed too, the last few years, it's just continually staying high. You know, the precipitation doesn't draw down or have a drier year to sort of catch up. And so, we're just facing more of those concerns, I guess.
Just to piggyback on that, with you being a little bit more conscious and maybe doing some steps that are a little bit more proactive because prevention is really the key, what type of feedback are you getting from some of the residents who come in and have to deal with the offices on, you know, "Too much government and just let me do what I want because I have, I have land rights." And it's not that we're trying to infringe, but we're trying to protect. And so, how is, do you see a real change in how you dealt with people, for those of you who've been here a while, years ago, 10 years ago, versus how you deal with them today and how accepting they are of you trying to protect them, not impose, imposing on their land rights?
I would say that historically, I haven't had too much issue with landowners in a permitting sense when we have a bluff or floodplain to impose standards on those. I think when we started having more aggressive standards in 2006 and 2007, we were coming out of a period where the county board had put a moratorium on development in the county areas for a little while because of some of these issues. We were having so many problems with drainage and so forth. We were building in an agricultural area and we weren't really putting in the infrastructure to handle drainage because it was large lot, private stuff. We saw that in kind of what we have created with our cost share program with landowner is a public-private partnership to manage water in the unincorporated areas that I think is working better. Is it perfect? No, we still have these residual stuff from things that were probably built in the not great place to start with. But I don't feel a pushback from residents so much. We had some pushback from some of the cities who also then had to adopt the same standards because we're the WMO and, or the board is the WMO. And we can set standards for the cities as well. And there was some pushback from them.
I would say we've got some pushback from developers initially too when the standards were adopted because they were significantly different than what we had before and maybe even stronger than what a number of the municipalities had at the time. But over the last 10, 15 years, developers have, you know, been seeing other communities adopt standards very similar and they're getting used to, you know, the practices that we have. It really hasn't been a big issue as of late, I would say.
Good. We have just a couple of minutes left. I wonder if we could turn it over for audience questions or for board questions? Audience?
Good morning. Thanks for the interesting presentation. To my, in the interest of time, I'll ask a very simple question here. State- State climatologists have been predicting that over the next few decades, we'll be seeing heavier rain periods during the winter, more moisture in winter, than really more dynamic winter storm or spring storms and into the early point of summer where we're going to get a lot more rain there, but then we're going to see a lot more drying in the late summer months. How does that change, that modeling change how we're looking forward at things like water storage and development and these standards?
It certainly makes construction difficult, and so, a lot of our practices that we put in, we have sort of windows to construct because most of the things are going into an agricultural field, and so, you can't do anything while there's a crop. And obviously, winter is difficult too. And we've sort of noticed that our spring construction window has become so narrow where it's very difficult to get anything done because you get the snow melt, you get large rains, and then a field gets planted. So, from that perspective, it makes it difficult to maybe do some of those things, where we used to have multiple windows in a year to construct something that might be beneficial. And now, we're really sort of forced to do most of it in the fall. Or, we've also allowed for producers to plant their field to something that can be disturbed, to allow for summer construction. So, we're trying to adapt a bit to those changing conditions, but it is sort of narrowing up our window to do some of these projects.
I would add one more thing. From the development side, when an engineer sizes the storm sewer system and the ponds and so forth, they use rainfall storm sizes from a technical document that's published for the state. And that gets updated about every 20 years. So, if rainfall continues to go, the amount of rainfall that engineers will require to size their systems for will also go up. Now, that creates some lag time or creates some stress on infrastructure, particularly older infrastructure. And again, it's the stuff that was built before standards that's going to have the most impact because there is this sort of self-correction. And there's also some safety factors. Within floodplain stuff, there is a floodplain that's predicted from modeling, then there's a foot added to that elevation-wise, it's called the base flood, and then a home has to be a foot above that. So, there's a two-foot safety factor in there for some of that. That will absorb some of that.
Thank you.
Are there audience questions?
Good morning. Danielle Fox, Social Services. I'm wondering if you can speak to any trends that you're seeing specifically with our senior population? And as that population is expected to grow from about 8% today to almost 30% in 2040, are there things that you're anticipating moving forward?
That's a good conversation we should have with you. We haven't, that hasn't been on our radar at all in terms of specific populations.
But we, just to add on to that, we have been noticing that a little bit more with the septics where we're getting older people not wanting to leave their home or so on, they're selling their homes and they have to do this compliance inspection. So, we, this is our opportunity to start looking at those septic systems. And then, also, we're getting a lot more proposals for, I'm not sure the correct term of like...
Accessory dwelling unit.
Accessory dwelling units. Mom and dad want to move in, grandpa and grandma, but not in their house, but in the accessory dwelling. And we're trying to figure out how we're going to work this septic system. Can they combine it? Do they have to have their own? So, we should get together with you and talk about this senior population and how we're going to deal with that in housing.
Commissioners, I think I'll turn it to you.
Madam Chair, just a comment and then maybe a question on how we're here. We started off about an hour ago talking about murky water and how we clean water up. And just a casual observation, I happened to be watching the news one night about the walleye problem on Lake Malax. And apparently, the DNR Fisheries Experts have determined that as we've been clearing the water in Lake Malax, that apparently is having a negative impact on the ability of walleye eggs to hatch and thrive. I, who knew? And apparently, the water's gone from two feet to six feet in clarity, whatever that, there's a term you use for that, I just noticed. Apparently, the lakes we're talking about here in Scott County are noted for their walleye prowess, so we must be okay with that. Just an observation. Bluff lots. We talked about bluff lots and houses falling down because bluffs are sliding and things like that. In this river valley, I'm familiar with a couple of things that I deal with outside of my commissioner responsibilities, again, where bluffs slide, particularly onto railroads, and railroads slide. And now, we have houses slide, and I heard that we bought someone out because the bluff slid. When did that become a taxpayer responsibility? That's my question.
The theory is, from the disaster management folks, that getting stuff out of harms way is cheaper than the long-term than repairing flood damage and so, problems repeatedly. And that same has extended to the bluff stuff, although it's much rarer. And that was out of the 2014 disaster. There was, as part of the whole disaster relief package, a certain amount of money allocated by the legislature for those types of situations that we used.
Madam Chair, when we do that, does that parcel then become public property?
Forever and ever.
In the floodplain, when we buy someone out, that now becomes, nobody's going to buy and build there again.
The idea being that the risk has then been permanently removed.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Questions or comments over here?
I guess I would just say, aren't you fortunate that storms obey and when you have a flood every 100 years, it waits? Wait, whoa, it can't come back? I mean, some of this was asked, you know, weather's changing, climate change, global warming, that's a fight for somebody else. We should be good stewards of creation regardless of who's in office and what the circumstances are. The question is, with things being what they are and seeming to trend in that direction, you kind of mentioned, you do something today and it might bear fruit 10 years from now, just because that's how creation works and all of those things. Are we, us, Scott County, looking at, hey, how do we try to get ahead of something that may trend down at some point, the trend may continue, without being overly obtrusive? That's a loaded question. But I get, you know, weather has sort of, I don't want to say predictable, especially in this state, but you kind of had a run, and now Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed is going crazy to try to find water storage from 2014 flood, thinking we're going to have it all over again this year. And who's to say we still might not? But weather's crazy. What are we doing for some of these projects to try to get ahead, knowing that we might not have to? Right? But thinking outside the box and...
I think that's a really good question. You know, human nature is, we have, we have one disaster and one home at risk, and we make a knee-jerk reaction and pass new statutes and things to protect everything. And where you know is the appropriate line. And I think some of that is by having conversation. We have conversation at staff levels, we have our advisory committee from people in the community that are part of this conversation to make sure that things are reasonable. And the other part of it is to have data along that whole timeline so that you can make informed decisions before it's an emergency. And it's a moving target. I don't have the crystal ball answer for you. And I'm also...
Wait, oh, that's...
Oh, boy.
Early in my career, I would apologize for that, but now, at this point, I don't apologize for not having all the answers. But I do think, you know, it's somewhat of having that data, like the watershed yield stuff that we talked about. Now, that took Ryan, a lot of work to go into that data, and we could collect a lot more data for you, but boy, at what point are we spending more money on that versus doing things? You do have to sometimes make courageous decisions that aren't going to be popular or may be popular, or in hindsight, may not have been completely, they may have been a little overboard. But guess what? That's what you guys ran for, sorry.
But at least someone's making those decisions, and sometimes, they have to be courageous.
And it's for the larger conversation.
And learning from them both pro and con. I think that's, right, we're all in this thing together, it's human nature, so that's a good thing. And you mentioned something about, second question sort of, the engagement level, you know, you have communications, you have relations with the different groups, and I've seen that with watersheds, which is where my question is going. And, you know, I'm asking this camera, or this question on camera, but is it, like, would you like to see a more cohesive, I shouldn't use that term, but a less fragmented, I think the word was used, watershed-type organization for our county, or what would be...
Mr. Chair and, or Madam Chair and Commissioners, we've had that conversation, and we actually had, I think it was around 2009, we had the Minnesota Administration Division look at different models for watershed management within Scott County, by either consolidating some, or another model might be to have the SWCD be the staffing for all the watersheds in order to have more continuity and overlap and economy of scale with watershed organizations. Still there? Still a possibility? A number of us who are sort of the administrators are approaching retirement age. We have less turf to protect, which I think is probably what happened with that study. Once an organization gets into existence, most organisms want to continue to exist. And Leslie was engaged in that as well, and it was a difficult conversation.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Beer, I think it was a difficult conversation, but I agree with Paul. I think there's some opportunities to look at that. I got a call from Dave Hemsey, the county administrator in Carver, to talk about the lower min and the problems with staffing. And Paul has talked often, and even with Gary, about, you know, it's 100 feet and down to the river is basically what, you know, why don't we talk about that? Is it really needed? So, I think there are some opportunities to talk about some consolidations in those areas, as Paul has mentioned, but it was a difficult discussion when scale broached it. But I think some changes have taken place that might make it an easier conversation.
I just, or go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to add on to your first question that you asked, that Paul answered. One of the new goals in our watershed plan that we just adopted was to create a resilient landscape. So, and part of that is working with landowners on soil health. If you think about how many acres we have that are tilled and are open, one of the principles of soil health is keeping a living plant on that soil and keeping it covered at all times. I think if we can add more acres in that, that that would greatly possibly help with water quality. So, some of the principles that we're starting to implement more in building that resident landscape, I think, will also help.
I was just chuckling on the last exchange, the organisms want to survive, right? Isn't it funny how predictable human nature is? It just is. And I wasn't afraid to ask the question because I know that we have very open relationships with those folks, and I think difficult conversations should not ever be, you know, we should never stray away from those because they're helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. First off, just thanks to the group. I know this was a lot of work, a lot of data, and what a, what a big issue, clean water and soil. And what part of it is our role? That changes, and if we had a little more time, I'd ask you to address that, but I'll save that. Thanks to Jim for being here. I think our water management organizations, our advisory members and planning commission members are so important to this process and the ability of them and us to work with the Scott County Soil and Water Conservation District. In other counties in the state, that cooperation isn't the same as here. I hear about that all over, and we should be proud of that, that continue to do that because, like I keep saying, we're all on the same team here. We have the same goal. So, thank you for the presentation, and we will recess for five minutes to set up the room for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
All right. All right. The meeting of the May 21st, 2019, Scott County Board of Commissioners, back to order. We're on to item seven on the agenda. Item seven is our consent agenda. These are items that have been previously reviewed, workshopped, and discussed. Many of them are non-controversial in nature. I will read the items, and please remember that we have pulled item 7.6 from the consent agenda. 7.1, renew the contract with the state of Minnesota effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021, for the sentencing to service program in Scott County for adult and juvenile offenders. 7.2, authorize Scott County Health and Human Services to join Carver County in participation in the Family Homeless Prevention and Assistance Program for the biennial period of July 1st, 2019 to September 30th, 2021. 7.3, adopt resolution number 2019-070, appointing Commissioner Barb Weckman-Brackey to the Strategic Plan to End Child Abuse and Neglect Steering Committee. 7.4, adopt resolution number 2019-071, authorizing entering into a cooperative agreement with the city of Elko New Market for the design and construction of a roundabout at the County Highway 2 and County Highway 91 intersection. 7.5, approve the preliminary and final plat of safety signs addition, consisting of one lot on 35.75 acres in Section 1 of New Market Township, and approve the conditional use permit for Safety Signs Incorporated to operate a contractor yard with a business office and associated outdoor storage. 7.7, adopt resolution number 2019-079, authorizing the permanent detachment of a split residential parcel that lies in Burnsville-Egan-Savage School District 191 and annex it to Prior Lake Savage School District Number 719. 7.8, adopt resolution number 2019-069, approving health, dental, life insurance, and flexible spending account providers and county contribution and employee costs for health, dental, and life insurance, effective August 1st, 2019, for all eligible employees, and rescinding resolution number 2018-095. 7.9, adopt resolution number 2019-072, authorizing an amendment to a master agreement with Iteris Incorporated for Intelligent Roadway Information System Traffic Management Software to increase the total compensation amount. 7.10, adopt resolution number 2019-073, authorizing entering into an agreement with Bolton and Mank Incorporated for engineering consultant services for the County Highway 2 and County Highway 15 roundabout in Helena Township, and authorizing a budget amendment for advancing funds to 2019 and 2020. 7.11, adopt resolution number 2019-074, authorizing entering into agreement number 1031080 with the state of Minnesota Department of Transportation for work on Trunk Highway 13 included in the County Highway 21 and Trunk Highway 13 reconstruction project located in the city of Prior Lake. 7.12, adopt resolution number 2019-077, awarding a contract to H&R Construction Company for County Project 99-17 for sign replacement along various county highways. 7.13, adopt resolution number 2019-078, authorizing entering into an agreement with cover-all for custodial services for Scott County facilities. 7.14, to adopt resolution number 2019-080, approving entering into an agreement with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for the 2019 Local Recycling Development Grant. 7.15, to approve record of disbursements and approved claims. 7.16, to adopt resolution number 2019-082, authorizing Scott County to apply to the United States Department of Agriculture Reconnect Grant Loan Rural Broadband Development Program and naming the county administrator as the authorized agent on the application. And 7.17, to approve payroll processing of personnel actions. Those are the 16 items on the consent agendas. Are any comments or discussion or motion?
Madam Chair, I will move those 16 items on consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
Been moved and seconded, do approve those 16 items as read. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Wonderful. Now we're on to, well, at least it's a happy subject for some of the people in the room. It's great to see so many good friends here. We're on to item 8.1, recognition of Scott County retiree Mary Shane Bauer. And Mary, if you will join Commissioner Beer at the podium, he might have a couple things to say about you.
See, now, I officially have to make the call, so Mary Shane Bauer, come on down. Now, I'm doing that because she's had to make a few phone calls for a commissioner that's going to remain nameless, to make sure that he or she makes it to the extension meeting. I just wanted to say that for a friend. And you know what? We're getting too good at boiling a long, outstanding career down to one page. That's not good for us, but great for the person standing here. So that's you, Mary. So here we go. Mary fell into her position with Scott County Extension, literally. Now, do we have a YouTube for that, or whatever it was? We'd like to see that. As she entered the room for her interview, she missed a small step, fell to the floor, and twisted her ankle. Now, is that?
That's true.
Is that true? Okay, all right. I like it. I mean, that's making an entrance, making entrance. That small misstep started her on a 30-year journey providing administrative support to extension staff and the residents of Scott County. Mary began her position with Scott County's University of Minnesota Extension Office in January 1990 with three small girls at home, the youngest three months old. Today, that three-month-old baby, now I'm reading this, I'm reading this. That three-year-old baby, Michelle, works at Health and Human Services, serving Scott County residents as well. Mary remembers her first day fondly. She was sat down at a desk, given a list of dairy farmers, cows, and the amount of milk they produce, and asked them to put it in order highest to lowest. Go for it. I think that was our training program, right? That was the extent of her onboarding. I think that's in a manual someplace. At the time she began her role in support of the extension, the program consisted of 4H, agricultural, and home ec. I can't say home economics, it's home ec. That's all I know, right? Home ec. She recorded a daily report on market prices for KCHK, which is my kid's favorite radio station. She did that for each, for the radio each morning. She recalls her home ec. home study groups that were eventually discontinued because it became too much coffee and chatting and not enough education. Was there a yardstick or a ruler involved with that? In 2000, the Extension Office moved from First Street in Jordan to its current location, the Scott County Fairground. Over Mary's career, she has seen great changes in technology. She recalls a time before the county had email, they had one computer in the Extension Office with Pegasus mail. Was that like a literal horse with wings, or was that?
It was.
Pegasus mail that allowed them to email through to the University of Minnesota. Back then, all enrollments for projects and animals at the county fair were handwritten. Today, it's all online, from the youth enrolling their county fair projects to the judges' results and everything in between. To say Mary is the glue that holds Extension together is an understatement. Over her 30-year career, Mary has affected countless lives through 4H, Master Gardeners, agriculture, and financial capability programming. Scott County is a unique mix of urban and rural, and the work of the Extension Office helps to support the rural and agricultural land of the people of Scott County. She's had the privilege of working with a second generation of 4H youth and cherishes the friendship she has made along the way. We just want to thank you, Mary, for your 30 years of dedicated service and contributions to the people of Scott County. Your work in the Extension Office has truly made a difference. This wasn't just a job for you. Your successful coordination of events, stewardship of funds, and support of extension programs were invaluable. As you say eloquently, as you so eloquently stated at the end of your day, you helped someone. The truth, you helped thousands. Congratulations on all that you've accomplished, and we wish you well in your retirement. We are sure you, we wish that you and Dennis will enjoy much-deserved time traveling and spending time with your family and grandchildren. So, to commemorate this day, I believe you chose this certificate.
I did.
So we're going to present you with a certificate in recognition of dedicated service from January 2nd, 1990 to May 31st, 2019. Now, you have a 30-minute PowerPoint. We're going to get that queued up. So if you'd like to say a few words, maybe introduce any family and friends, the floor is yours.
I'm not real big on speaking, so it's going to be short and sweet. I'd like to just thank you all. I've enjoyed working here, and I look forward to retirement and doing the things that I want to do for a change.
Before we break for a little reception, I think we have a few other people who would like to say a few words. And I'd like to start out. Mary is an example for all county employees. I tell all of you often, thank you for choosing public service. It is so important, and Mary exemplifies how your job title and description may not say that you change lives. You save lives. And Mary really has done that, and I can speak personally. As a 4H'er, as a coworker of hers, as a volunteer in the program, Mary's influenced my life. She was that competent, caring adult when I was a young person that maybe saved my life sometimes. She was a mentor and a role model as a working professional, a working woman. When I just had my first job out of college, she was there when babies were sick and things like that to give me advice about how to handle and balance that. And the thing is, she didn't, just like Commissioner Beer said, she didn't do that for one person. She did that for thousands of young people. So, Mary, 30 years of service to Scott County, but more than that, you changed lives. So, thank you. I believe we have some other people to say a few words. Welcome, Pat.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Pat Morim. I used to be the regional director here. And so I'm kind of standing in for Tammy McCullough, who's gone for a conference, so she's out of town. So, Mary, she sends her regrets that she couldn't be here this morning. So I am very happy to represent the University of Minnesota Extension in honoring you on your retirement. Now, let's see if I can get through this. You and I spent some good days together. I really enjoyed getting to know you and working with you during the years that I served as regional director. And as I got to know you, it didn't take me long to realize a couple things. That your work on combination of skills is clearly what made you both effective and efficient. You were really great in the position. You've worked with a number of staff through the years. Have you kept count? Do you know how many? I wouldn't know, but I know it's been a lot. But the thing that I really know is that you've always provided them with the support and the resources they needed, so that in turn, they could do amazing programs back to Scott County residents. And so that includes 4H youth development, agriculture, master gardeners, food and nutrition, family development. You helped to cover the water for all of those. So I could go through a whole long list and litany of all the things that she's done, that people provided me, that I knew about her. But I'm going to just pick out a few little sampling of some highlights of examples of your work and your resourcefulness particularly. You are a great writer, so you were good at writing articles promoting 4H. You remember doing a few of those over the years? And you were good, you sought out funds for 4H food stand equipment, assisting in securing a $20,000 grant, and then ordering and setting up the installation of the equipment. That is not a role normally for a support staff to take on, but you step in where you need to. You played a key role in success of the Kids Day at the Scott County Fair. Last year reached over 1,000 youth in its fourth year. You took the opportunity to pilot a new county fair entry program, back when it was like, how are we going to do this on computer, all those good things? And again, you just never shied away from trying something new or different. You were great at creating efficiencies, developing procedures and processes in all areas of your work, and especially taking pride as well in financial stewardship of public dollars. You were always mindful of that. And then personally, I appreciated your attention to detail and organization for every extension committee meeting I traveled to here in Scott County. During the years I worked with you, I could always depend on you to have everything ready when I got here. And usually, I flew in at the last minute. I drove from Anoka, crosstown, in rush hour traffic, but I never worried because she was always organized. Everything was ready to go. And that included an added bonus of homemade meals for supper for extension committee meetings, right, Mary? And so with all your workload, you still found time to do that, and they were delicious. I still remember and have the recipe for that soup that I cannot pronounce. Thank you, that you do extremely well. It was a great soup. And so, Mary, when I was thinking back on my years of working with you, there were a number of words that came to mind that I believe helped to describe your work for extension. Some of those are the smiles of welcome. You always were welcoming at that front desk, always a smile on your face. Great with people skills. You knew how to talk to people. You knew how to draw things out of them. You knew how to help them, and they make them feel good when they were done. But you were also very resourceful, calm, steady, organized, dependable, and excellent at your work. Now, see, this is where it's always hard for me, so, okay. So on behalf of University of Minnesota Extension, I thank you for your 30 years of dedicated work to Scott County Extension and all of its programs. Congratulations on your retirement. You'll be greatly missed, and you'll leave a big hole. And on just a personal note, welcome to the world of retirement and have a lot of fun.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Sharp. Can you hear me okay? Is that okay? And I'm an extension educator with 4H, and I've gotten to work with Mary for the past six years. And I also just want to say the most heartfelt, deep, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Because you've already heard a lot about the types of things that Mary has done for the program, and everybody who knows Mary knows that great big smile, that light, you know, you walk into the room. But Mary has also helped us through tremendous transitions, really challenging times. She has been the pillar and the foundation of the program, not just for us as staff, but for members of the program. You know, when there's been turnover in staff, that's a huge thing when you have transition, whether it's in 4H or in one of the other areas of extension. But in 4H, I'm, that's what I'm most familiar with, it causes a lot of, it causes some uncertainty. It causes, you know, stress for the people in the program. And Mary was able to provide this wonderful, calming, reassuring, knowledgeable, kind presence throughout all of that, that I really feel like held the program together in wonderful hands. As we were transitioning in and bringing in new staff, she would take them under her wing and help them learn, learn the ropes. But she also continued to provide that kindness and that warm presence for people calling into the office who might not know the new staff person and might have otherwise felt like, oh, I'm not sure what's going on in 4H, but they're like, oh, I know Mary. And they knew that she would help them get to the right answers to get what they needed. The other thing is, I don't know if you guys know this, but sometimes there can be a little bit of drama in 4H. Sometimes, you know, you get young people and competition, and hot weather, and their parents, and animals, and all together. It can be a little intense. And one of the things that I so appreciate about you, Mary, is that many, many times that you have been able to help bring things back down and just be a good, kind, calming presence to help, you know, calm our heads prevail and to help the right thing happen. And I appreciate that you ever put ethics at the front of what you do. You were always thinking about what's the ethical thing. You're always, she's always a good steward for county resources, so attentive to that, to make sure that we're doing what's right for people in the county, what's right for the stakeholders, and just what's ethical in every, in every interaction. And I truly respect that and appreciate that. And you will be so missed, and you leave this tremendous legacy, not just of how beloved you are, which will be, there's no replacing that, but you also leave this tremendous legacy of having laid the pathway for Michelle to follow you. And you, I don't know if anyone has ever seen a more intentional preparation for retirement than what Mary Shane Bauer has done, writing a procedure for every single thing, making sure everything she's done is documented, is linked, is available, is organized. That, the kindness of that, the respect of that is just truly tremendous. So thank you so much for all that you've done for us and for everyone in the program. Thank you, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Let's celebrate. We'll recess for about 10 minutes. We have to call the meeting back to order again after that. We have some refreshment in the conference room next door, and I know it might not be big enough for all of us, so we can gather in the hallway then. So, thank you, Mary. Congratulations. Let's celebrate. May 21st, 2019, meeting of the Scott County Board of Commissioners. We're on to agenda item 10.1, to receive information on the Scott County Foster Care Program. Suzanne.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Suzanne Arson. I'm the Child Welfare Manager. And first, I want to just say thank you for giving us the opportunity to share, I think, really important information about our foster care program, and more importantly, our foster parents. May is National Foster Care Month, so it's really a fitting time to acknowledge, highlight, and appreciate the work that our foster care providers do every day in this community. Much of my presentation is going to be focused on child foster care, really because we have a critical need for resources. But I do want to take just a minute and call out and recognize the work that our adult foster care providers do to support vulnerable adults in our community, as well as our childcare providers. They are really helping to support the communities most vulnerable by really nurturing, assuring safety, and caring for their families. So as we talk about the need around child foster care, many of you have seen this particular slide a number of times. It really is referencing the trends around children experiencing placement in our community. It is on the rise. It has been, and it's certainly a statewide trend. What is important within this is to say that as children enter foster care in our community, it really represents that we need foster parents across the community. From the smallest of towns to the largest city in the county, we really need foster parents that can help meet the needs as children enter foster care. This next slide really represents some work that I think we are proud of. Generally speaking, we really support that families, if children can't remain safely with their parents, that we look to extended families to step in and help care for, keep children safe, and nurture those family connections. So this is a slide that talks about the percent of days children spend in foster care with relatives. So you can see, generally speaking, we've had strong performance. We did have a dip starting in 2017, really related to several large sibling groups that were with relatives, but for a variety of reasons, though, that place, those placements disrupted. But what I can say that we are proud about is, in quarter one of 19, our percent is back over to 70%. And so we are really proud of the continued work to explore relatives in helping to support safety for kids. Though I will say, as we talk about relative care, that has really changed the dynamics in foster care licensing. By history, we look at, often we would license foster parents, what we would call traditional foster parents, and they would remain licensed for years. As we have increased our use of relative care, it has created more of a constant turnover in the program. Because relatives generally come forward, take care of a relative child, and when that case or situation is resolved, they close their license. And so from a staffing perspective, it certainly creates some capacity issues. Because we know also, to support and to support, to support children in relative care requires ongoing support with the relative caregiver, both from walking them through the licensing process, and walking them through the training, and supporting the ongoing dynamics when they have relative children in their care. So this slide, again, captures our total number of foster care applications we receive each year. It mirrors in many.
Suzanne, can we?
Sure.
Ask a question, Starey? Thank you.
Thank you. To that point, while it's still fresh, children staying with relatives. I think it happens all the time, but are those counted in here?
These are children who are placed with relatives.
By a court order or something like that.
Correct.
Okay. So when you're talking about licensing relatives, then, is that so they can receive the court order? Or do we compensate the relatives for taking care of the kids?
Correct. When we're talking about a relative foster care placement, they are, they become licensed. It's a state requirement that a relative is, goes through the same licensing process as a traditional, and then they are paid a foster care rate, just like a regular foster parent would be to care for relative children.
Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
This is a slide that I think I am highly concerned about. And what it tells us is, we know when children need to be removed from their parent, it's a trauma. The next best case is that relatives can step forward and help care for the child. When that's not possible, we then really want to look at, how do we keep the child connected within their community? Keep them in close proximity to their parents, their social connection, their education. But when we don't have the resources, then we need to look outside of Scott County for relative, other resources. So this slide really shows, like, for example, in 2018, 19 and 1/2% of our placement referrals had to go out of county for a placement. And what does that mean? That means two dozen children needed to be placed outside of Scott County because we didn't have a local resource to meet that need. So my hope is, through some of these efforts, to continue to look at recruitment, to talk about the important role and the critical role that foster parents play. about the important role and the critical role that foster parents play, that we can come back a year from now or two years from now and certainly see this number trending in a different direction.
Suzanne, is, is some of that percentage, or what part of that percentage of kids placed out of county had to do with, you know, special needs or challenges that we just, you know, some would probably, we didn't have enough traditional foster care families, but some we didn't have foster care families or, or organizations that could help with special needs? Is that true?
Yeah, I think that's hard to say, because I think when we're talking about kids who are entering foster care, they've generally experienced a trauma, and so they may have associated behaviors or special needs, either A, as just the result of a trauma, or they may have other special needs, learning disabilities, mental health issues, that might be connected to abuse or neglect, or just more longstanding concerns. So children come generally with a number of just different, unique needs. Sometimes we look to what we call private agencies, when we may not have a resource or perhaps the needs of the children sort of support a higher level of care. I can say by history, we don't use private foster care very much. So most of the kids that end up being referred out of county are ending up in other county foster care homes. Some private agencies, but mostly other county.
Thank you.
Sure. So again, I just want to highlight May is National Foster Care Month, and we are doing a lot of work in our agency to look at and talk about how do we improve the experience for children and their families in the foster care system. One of those efforts is really around how do we redefine foster care? The idea historically was, we look at foster care as substitute care. Parent can't take care of the child, child goes to foster care. We are really trying to redefine that as a co-parenting, that we are wanting to bring birth parents and foster parents together quickly so that they can really wrap around children and wrap the supports around families to support better outcomes, to support better reunification or faster reunification. So the Quality Parenting Initiative, or QPI, is one of those initiatives that's helping to support this work of really supporting birth parents and foster parents more effectively. And in fact, we have a Scott County launch tomorrow afternoon. We certainly would welcome any of you to come over and be a part of that process. Okay, before I turn it over to really the star, star of our show, we have our Scott County Foster Parent who is going to sort of speak her story. But I wanted to take a minute, because I've had an opportunity to interview some parents who have experienced our foster care system, and to hear from them, the constant messages that really are around, when I know that foster parent, when I meet them, when I'm in a relationship with them, I can have trust that my child's being taken care of, and I can stop, I can take a breath, and I can start my own healing. I can focus on what I need to do, because I know I have confidence my child is taken care of. So I'm not going to read these quotes, because late on Friday, we received actually a statement from a birth parent regarding really her relatively recent experience in our system. So I thought I'd just read a bit of her information around the impact that her foster family had on her. Hello, my son was placed in foster care immediately after his birth. The foster family came to the hospital, introduced themselves to me, and let me say my goodbyes. It was obviously heart wrenching, but I used this time to better myself. I was able to pump milk, and the foster family assured that they fed them up to my son, which was incredibly important to me. After a few weeks, I went to an inpatient treatment facility. Here, my son was able to start with coming to visit me several days a week and eventually place full time in my care. The first time the foster family brought him to see me, they came with gifts, such as newborn photos, newborn footprints on a card. They realized and took the time to recognize that these were moments that I was unable to have for myself, and I significantly appreciate their, appreciated their efforts. Throughout my experience with them, they continued to keep me connected to those moments and to him. In the beginning, they would simply note how much he ate, how he slept, how many dirty diapers he had, making me feel like he was safe and adequately being cared for. It was a relief off my shoulders. To this day, long after my child protection case is closed, I am still close to this foster family. They babysit for me, they watch him while I work. My oldest child has become friends with their children. We forever will be bonded by this experience. To foster parents who are caring for someone else's children, thank you. Understand that we are hurting and your support and reassurance for our children, that our children are in good hands means more than you will ever know. Please note that your partnership in this helps ease our stress and allows us to continue to head towards our better future and reunification with our children. So again, I think just a pretty moving story from a parent who's had firsthand experience working with, I think, some of our best foster parents. So now I'd like to really turn it over to Cara Coburn, who is our Scott County Foster Parent. She's been licensed with us for just about five years and has really an impactful story to share.
Excuse me. Hi, my name is Cara Coburn, and my husband and I began the process of becoming a kinship foster parents, which is family or friends that are going to take care of, that are willing to take a child who's in placement, five years ago, when his younger siblings ended up in foster care. During our licensing process, we knew it would be a while before the kids could be placed with us, because they were currently out of state. Our licenser asked if we might be interested in doing respite care. While we waited for them to arrive, respite can be anything from a few hours to a few days to a few, to a couple of weeks. Respite gives other foster parents, someone to take care of the kids in their care if they need to be out of town, or it can help out biological families that might need a chance to deal, to take a break or to deal with other issues like taking classes or finding housing, without worrying about what's going on with their children. Our relative kids came to us, and as we were finalizing their guardianship, we realized we wanted to continue to help kids and families, and thus began our journey into traditional foster care. Since we started, we've had 35 kids in our, come through our home, either for respite or long-term placements. We have adopted two girls who were unable to reunify, and we took guardianship of my husband's siblings. Initially, we were nervous about what biological families would be like. We had reservations about what contact we would need to have and whether it'd be safe. I think what really helped with that was talking to other more experienced foster parents at trainings and networks about how well it really did work out. Typically, families start with supervised visits, and at first, most of our contact happens on the phone, as we work to ensure that they're able to talk to and connect with their children. As we become comfortable, with caseworker's permission, I have supervised visits so parents can have more time. As we move to unsupervised visits, typically I meet mom or dad somewhere for pickups and drop-offs. I think fostering has taught our family to reach out more and that we had some preconceived notions about foster care. Fostering has expanded our families and our definition of family. My kids will tell you that every kid who's come through our home is one of their siblings. I think one of the most rewarding things that has happened from fostering is the relationships that we've developed with the biological families. Watching parents work hard to make things safe for their kids to return home is amazing. Developing relationships with biological families has meant that we can continue to support them when their child returns home and we continue to see their successes. We actually have contact with every child who's lived in our home long-term. Some we just chat with on Facebook occasionally, and others we see and have their kids, that they come and spend weekends with us, even though they've gone home. I really think fostering is important, because kids deserve to be kids. And sometimes families need help in order to make their home safe, take care of themselves, or learn to take care of their kids in a safe way. And if I was talking to someone considering becoming a foster parent, I would say do it. The kids are the best part of course, but really overall, it's very rewarding. There's a lot of training provided to help learn how to parent kids with trauma, and you have lots of support from other foster parents and the county.
Cara, thank you so much.
So I just want to end, I found this quote actually on social media. I think it really certainly embodies the work that Cara does and the work that most of our foster parents do, and that is the idea that foster parents are often, often a life preserver for children and families, that they're able to welcome children into their hearts and homes, but also have the courage to help them reunify. The idea that they're not just saving children, but they're saving lives. So with that, I just want to end with, again, a thank you to Cara, to all of our foster parents for the work that they do every day. Many thanks to our staff who do the work to recruit, train, support foster parents. And again, many thanks to our board for your ongoing support of our programs. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. What a great presentation. Cara, thank you so much for all you do and for sharing your story with us. Truly, yeah, you're a hero and, and changed lives. I'm sure my colleagues have some comments. Commissioner Beard?
I really appreciate the county's staff's focus on keeping biological families together. Apparently that was Cara, you and your husband started on that path with that same purpose, that same value. Thank you for doing that.
It's impressive. It's really impressive. I've got a question. You said you entered through, or you kind of got engaged through, was it kinship?
Yes, kinship. My, my husband's parents weren't able to continue parenting his younger brother and sister, so he's.
But that, is that a program?
It's like relative foster care.
Okay, okay.
So kinship can be a relative or a close family friend that plays an important role in their family's life.
I know there's some groups out there, I didn't know if that was a name of?
No.
Got it, got it. No, that's super, I mean, that's family first. And sometimes the DNA is, and sometimes it isn't, right? Family first, so. Thank you, thank you.
Other questions?
I just think it's, it's so brave of people, you know, to take these kids, it's, it's a great thing, so thank you.
Well, okay, one last thing. I mean, that testimony sort of shows the fruit that can come from something like this. Because I think oftentimes, people think of foster care and they think of the things that just went into all of our minds. So that, that is, to, to highlight that and to, I know it's not news to you guys, but to the rest of the people, the rest of the world that don't deal or, or understand, it's just a beautiful, beautiful thing. So thank you for that, once again.
All right, wonderful, thank you. Onto item 11.1, to proclaim May 19th through 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week in Scott County. Joe Weida is here to present.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As Madam Chair said, the purpose of the agenda of my item is to adopt Resolution Number 2019-075, proclaiming May 19th through 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week in Scott County. National Public Works Week is an event that is observed each year during the third full week of May. Through the National Public Works Week and other efforts, the American Public Works Association does this and seeks to raise the public's awareness of public works issues and to increase confidence in public works employees who are dedicated to improving the quality of life for present and future generations. "Public Works: It Starts Here" is the theme for the 2019 National Public Works Week. This theme represents the many facets public works has on modern civilization that grow out of the efforts put forth by public works professionals across North America. What starts here? Infrastructure starts with public works. Growth and innovation starts with public works. Mobility starts with public works. Security starts with public works. Healthy community starts with public works. The bottom line is that citizens' quality of life starts with public works. So just as usual, in addition to the many ongoing studies we have going on, planning, preliminary, final design for activities, just read off a few of the projects that were completed in the last year since we were here. The construction of a roundabout at County Highway 86 and County Highway 46, the construction of County Highway 42 at Trunk Highway 13. Bridge was replaced on County Highway 8. Construction of the County Highway 83 and Fourth Avenue intersection. There was about 417,000 lineal feet of cracks sealed. Resurfaced about 12 center lane, or 35 lane miles of roadway. Seal coated 210 lane miles of roadway. Just shy of 16,000 lineal feet of ditches cleaned. 23 center line corridors either replaced or lined in preparation of the following year's overlays. Snow and ice control on nearly 400 center lane miles of road, same amount of miles for roads adopted and maintained by our volunteers, which Tony will be speaking of here later. Around 9,300 contact hours at the regional training facility. Over 450,000 rounds fired at the regional training facility. We also had the elevator modernization project here at the government center. Technology upgrades in courtroom six, replacement of an H-back unit at the central shop, and sanitary sewer listation rehabilitation project at the regional training facility. So at that, the public works staff asks that the Scott County Board of Commissioners proclaim the week of May 19th through 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week in Scott County.
Commissioner Beard?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make that motion that we adopt Resolution 2019-075, proclaiming next week as National Public Works Week in Scott County, and speak to it if it gets a second.
Second. And I will speak to it.
Thank you, Joe, for the fantastic work you guys do. You know, when it comes to core functions of government, one of the things we rarely argue over is snow plowing and ditch mowing and things like that, although I guess they argued over ditch mowing in the last couple of years. Any rate, thank you and your team for being so effective at keeping the roads open and the ditches clean and the, the streets lit and all the things that you do. Appreciate it. On behalf of the people I represent, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's the number one thing we do, is just the roads and just keeping things open. And it's always music to my ears when I'll be at a township and someone will say, why don't you guys keep the roads up like the county does? I like hearing that. So anyhow, thank you.
And I would also like to say, being that I personally am out in the crazy winter weather at crazy times, and I know other cities and counties have pulled equipment, and I start to wonder and pick up my phone and, oh, there's Old Yeller coming up over the hill. That we really, we really do a really good job with that. And so you, you and your staff ought to be commended for that. It's a really big deal, and people see that, they touch it, they taste it, and we do a really good job with our roads. And I'm just saying that since there's a winter storm warning just off to our west a little bit, but as of right now. But hopefully it stays there so you can keep everything greased and ready to go for next winter. So thank you very much. I like that. He called it, he called it. I like it. It's in the books.
Commissioner Beard?
Madam Chair, I know we made the motion and we're speaking to the motion, but I just, I got to ask Joe one question. 455,000 rounds is a lot of lead to be shot into that rubber backstop. How often do we have to change that and recycle that out?
Twice a year, generally, spring and fall. Not entirely the whole, whole wall, could be just pieces, but generally, there's a changeout of some sort twice a year, spring and fall.
Well, it must be a lot heavier when we take it out than when we put it in.
It's the young guys. He wants a couple of those cubes dropped in his driveway.
Sure I do.
I would like to just, well, ditto to everything everyone else has said, just want to make one clarification. You said next week, it is currently right now, May 19th through 25th.
Holy cow, it is.
So just want to make that clarification. We are in, in National Public Works Week right now. What, what an amazing meeting. I think so much of what has went on today has really dealt with the core functions of government. I think we can feel really good about all of this. And, and yes, this goes to the very essence of why county government exists, is, is this public works. The staff, your staff, Joe, they do such a good job in such crazy conditions and do what they need to do. That's what I so appreciate. I've had numerous dealings with several of them in the last couple of years, and if they're dealing with me, it's because of something crazy or weird, you know? And everybody is always accommodating and makes it work, even, even if they're supposed to be off, if they're supposed to be doing other stuff, they, they're problem solvers. I really appreciate that about your staff, that they're problem solvers. So, so I moved in seconded to proclaim May 19th through 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week in Scott County. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carried, thank you. All right, next item is 12.1, to receive information regarding Scott County Adopt a Highway Program as part of National Public Works Week.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm very, very happy to be up here today and following up on, on Joe's resolution. And to really recognize a, a very special group, I think, within our, our highway and the volunteers, really what we do. And so it, our Adopt a Highway Program really allows the, the public to engage and really provide a, a personal contribution to, in a public manner. And so we're extremely appreciative of the work that, that they do to help clean our, our roadways. We've got 400 or so lane miles in the county, and so it, it's a big effort. And so there's lots of individuals. And so there's lots of individuals, there's family members, there's religious organizations, there's homeowners associations, there's youth groups, there's sports teams, public entities, private business. It's really, really a great group of people. And so they're, they're out there twice a year, in the spring and the fall. You'll probably see them out there. I know I have. The last couple of weeks they've been out. And you'll see the, the, the black bag sitting on the side of the road that our maintenance folks will come by and pick up when they're done. But it's a, a great contribution by many, many people. And so in your packet there are the lists that we currently have that are helping us out. So take note of those and you'll see the signs along our, our roadway. So most of the segments are about a two-mile segment, some a little shorter, some a little longer, depending on where a good term now is. And some have several different segments. And so we've got about 150 different groups out there helping us out. And so please take note of those and thank them, given the opportunity. We, for those that may be watching or listening in, we do have eight segments that are currently open right now. And so, and if you're interested and, and most want to, you know, pick a section roadway that's close to either where they live or where they work. And sometimes they do come open. So if you are interested, recommend people reaching out to us. And you can find it on our website at Adopt a Highway, if you just go to the Scott County website. And you can reach out and say, hey, we're interested when something opens up in this area. But we're very thankful for all of these groups of, of people helping us out. So just want to recognize them today.
Yes, Leslie.
Is Joe still here?
Yep.
He'll save me an email, but Shakopee Boy Scout Troop 218 left you a whole bunch of bags last night on County Highway 14.
Wonderful. Any questions for Tony? Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think this program, it, it reminds me, you know, just like our foster care providers and our other volunteers, it's, it's not they, the county, it's we, the county. And all these people are, are part of county government. I sure appreciate it.
I just will comment, I, I helped the Lions do their ditch. And it's very interesting, some of the things you pick up on that ditch. It's like, what, what was this doing in somebody's car? Or how did this end up here?
All right. Thank you, Tony. Onto item 13.1, again, Joe Weida presenting to adopt Resolution Number 2019-076, authorizing Government Center 2 bid package number 2, contract awards for the Government Center Campus Project. And this is the item that has been amended. We have the new RBA in front of us and it will be available on the website. So, thank you, Joe.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners, once again. As Madam Chair indicated, this is the amended, amending the published version of the RBA. This is all part of the Government Center Campus Project, which is to construct a 122,000 square foot building adjacent to the Justice Center and Government Center 1. It includes things like the demolition of the conference center, the adjacent home, construction of the parking lots, some re-surfacing of some lots and extension of the parking lot north of the law enforcement center. Bid package number 2, which we're approving today, is for the complete build-out of the Government Center 2 building. The scope of this bid package ranges from concrete foundations all the way through building finishes, even to include irrigation and landscaping around the new building. We had a very successful bid turnout for this package, one of the largest I've even come close to being involved with. We received 139 bids for the different combined work scopes on May 1st of 2019. The bids were laid out in your package. I'm sure you don't want me to read through all of them.
No thanks, we can read those.
So all the lowest responsible bidders were representative. And a contract amount for all of these will equal $28,69,160. This does include the now added and amended version contract with TMI Systems for the plastic laminate casework. We had some last-minute details to get worked out with those folks. But they've agreed, KAA has approved. And they're going to follow through with their bid as proposed. So that was the reason for the amendment. So the engineer's estimate for this package was $33,458,697, which gives us a delta from the estimate of $5,389,537. This is the second of two bid packages for this building. And we are ready, with your approval, to move forward.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Joe?
Madam Chair, it should be noted that we did talk in the workshop ahead of time about the item that was under question. And I think we were, we got very satisfactory explanation of what was happening, which is why we can accept this amended agenda item right now and go ahead and award it at this time. So just note that. And with that, I'll move to adopt Resolution Number... Here it is, 2019-076, authorizing Government Center 2 bid package number 2, the contract awards for the Government Center Project.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 2019-076. Any further discussion?
Good work.
Further discussion? All right, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. Onto item 14, committee reports and commissioner updates. Commissioner Beard.
Start over here, Madam Chair. On the 7th of May, after our last council meeting, I did attend the Shakopee City Council meeting that evening just to say hello and fly the flag, tell them we appreciate their work. On the 8th, I had breakfast with the Shakopee City Administrator. Again, just relational stuff, make sure everybody's on the same page. And we're moving along, working well together. In that evening, I did attend, or for lunch that day, the suburban county coalition with three of the five suburban counties. We talked about ongoing efforts with our Metropolitan Council Governance Project that we've been working on for almost 10 years now. On the 8th, also then, because I was in St. Paul, I stopped by the Legislature and sat in at the Transportation Conference Committee and listened to them do their presentations as the House and the Senate were trying to rectify and come to a common agreement on the transportation bill. On the 10th, I have been, attended the scale meeting at Prior Lake City Hall. On the 13th, Monday, attended the Transportation Alliance Board Meeting in St. Paul. And then, once again, attended the Transportation Conference Committee, listened to some of the work they were doing there as they attempted to bring the transportation bill to closure before adjournment yesterday. And on the 14th that evening, attended the CAP Agency Board Meeting. And Friday, the 20th, attended the scale, or Monday, actually, the scale service delivery meeting at Shakopee City Hall. Madam Chair, that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Beer.
On the 7th, had my monthly meeting with the Administrator. On the 8th, MESB. 9th, attended the FISH monthly meeting. 10th, scale, as was mentioned. 14th, Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed. On the 15th, we got to do some Deliver What Matter Water Bottle. Thank you to, to the folks that work here at the county, which was awesome. And then we met, Leslie and I, and Tom was there as well as Prior Lake Quarterly. With a lot of things going on in Prior Lake as we speak. So that was a, a good meeting, a timely meeting. Many more that will be coming. 16th, went over to the Sheriff's Lunch, said hello, had a good conversation with Luke and Adam. And then on the 20th, yesterday, was at the Drug Court, seeing a graduation, which was, happened to be a vet as well. Wasn't part of the vet court per se, but just a great example of when humanity sees something else in another human being and says, you have what it takes. And Judge did a great job of just having some of those folks in the seats sort of testify of what is going on in their life and the impacts it's had on their immediate family and how that just, you know, impacts others in the community. And it was just a, a great picture of what could be. And it certainly was for that young gal who graduated. So love it. Love that community building. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the 7th, I had the Newmarket Township Monthly Meeting. On the 8th, the Metropolitan Emergency Services Board Meeting. On the 9th, I-35, I talked about the numerous projects that are going on, on Interstate 35. After that, with the Met Council, we went on a tour of what's going to be the Orange Line. So that's up and down 35 and looked at some of the bus stop areas. And that was a pretty nice tour. You know, there's a lot of things going on with the, in the 494 area over by the old, well, it's South Town. But there's going to be some overpasses, some underpasses there. And so it's, there's a lot of construction going, going on there for the next two or three years. And you think Prior Lake is bad right now. So had a short meeting with John Solberg from MinDOT. He used to be our area rep. And we don't, we're kind of in limbo with the area reps right now for MinDOT. And that's not a good thing. But he's got a more regional job now. Spring Lake Township had a meeting that evening. Big discussion on annexation issues out there. And there's about, there's a small amount of people, but it's about 10 to 11% of their tax base getting annexed out there in the next four, five, or whatever year, 2024, 2025. And that's very concerning to their board and to some residents because, you know, just you lose 11% and you only lose like 1% of your roads. Someone's got to pay the difference. So anyhow, at some point, I and the town's chair and one of the council members from Prior Lake are going to get together next week or two here and just see if there's some common ground there on what we can do. On the 10th, the scale meeting. On the 13th, planning and zoning. Had a couple of issues, pretty quiet there. Prior Lake City on the 15th, as Commissioner Beer had mentioned, lots of things going on there. And I, I say to people, I sometimes think they don't want me here because all my roads are kind of closed down to get here. So I think I put on an extra 15 miles getting here today, but that's fine. And then the Sheriff's Lunch last Thursday, I went to that. Commissioner Beer was there. And then I actually also went to the nighttime event there and not as well attended, but nonetheless, just as good. I did not have a hand there because I had another meeting before that. And so. Then I met with the Administrator on Friday, the 17th. And then I was at the Drug Court yesterday also with Commissioner Beer and Recky. And yeah, it's, it's very nice to see the fruition of that. What did we put into that, Leslie? Was it 300,000 a year, 900,000 or something?
That was the estimate, but it hasn't actually utilized that much every year.
But that's how much we have. So it was nice to see that that's, that that's panning out. So. And then last night, Prior Lake City Council met. They swore in their new police chief. And this morning's workshop. And that's my report.
Thank you. All right. For my report, May 7th, following our last board meeting, I believe we all, we're at the county board workshop. We had workshop on broadband grant and IT issues. On May 8th, in the evening, I was out at Jackson Township for the meeting on new county ordinances for the new comp plan. And there were representatives from Jackson, Louisville, and Sand Creek Townships there. On May 9th, I attended the end-of-year program for the Resilient Communities Program at the U of M, where our different projects that students and staff have been working on, they all did poster presentations. We had a good number of staff there. It was, was a good celebration of, of a lot of hard work by the students, by the staff. I think a good, important for, I mean, the whole purposes of the U of M, teaching, research, and outreach were all, all shown through that. We were getting benefit from those students. They were learning. And they were getting out of, off of campus and out into the communities. So I really appreciate that. Later the evening of May 9th, I attended the graduation and award ceremony for our Scott County Sheriff's Reserves Program. Again, just a group of dedicated volunteers who together give thousands of hours of, of real important work to our citizens. May 10th, attended the scale meeting. On May 14th, I had my monthly meeting with the county administrator. On May 15th, at 7:30 in the morning, I worked the tax tent for a while. I figured that we're gonna, if we're, we're gonna spend the money, I gotta be there to take it too. So.
Made it through.
Yep, yep. It, it was pretty slick. People just driving through and dropping off. May 16th, middle of the day, I was in St. Paul for the MelSA Board Meeting. The board did approve the hiring of a new executive director for our regional library system. And so that offer will go out and hopefully that individual will be in place before the retirement of our current executive director. Then the evening of May 16th, we had our local library board of trustees meeting. And, and I think of most, I mean, everything was important, but most important is that the rollout of the virtual library cards for all Shakopee High School, I think, middle school and high school students did happen. They all have a virtual library card now. So that the classes, the teachers, and the students of Shakopee can get into the Shakopee library databases, do a lot of work. We're paying for those databases. They're very useful, have a lot of information. And, and getting them on the community just makes sense. This will be a pilot project, see how it goes with Shakopee. Of course, if other school districts in the county are interested, I think we'll be happy to, to work with them on that. May 17th in the morning was the Dakota Scott Workforce Development Board. We had a different kind of meeting last Friday. We met at Farmington High School to learn a little bit about what they're doing there for career preparedness. Really, their philosophy is a student-led experience and, and trying to get, get students ready for, whether it be college, career, military workforce right out of high school. Later that day, I had lunch with Tammy McCullough from the University of Minnesota Extension Service to just hear some staffing updates. Yesterday, May 20th, I did attend the Treatment Court Graduation. It's always meaningful and impactful. Last evening was the Quarterly Human Services Resource Council Meeting. And then this morning, we had an update on the building project that we were all, all at. So that's the end of my report. If there's no...
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
Somebody already texted me asking me the name of the new police chief, and it's Steve Fraser.
Steve Fraser. And he came from Ramsey County, correct?
Yeah, I believe so.
I think so. Or St. Paul.
And he's actually been all around.
Yeah, most recently was at Ramsey.
Dakota County, he's been all over, so.
Good, good. Thank you. We'll look forward to working with him. County Administrator update.
Madam Chair, we're coming into a busy couple of weeks here. So the, the courthouse, we will be closed on May 27th in honor of Memorial Day, so that is next Monday. But on that Tuesday morning at 9 o'clock, we'll have the flag raising for our vets right outside here in the links. So I'm hoping that everybody can attend that. And then our staff take a few minutes to come down. The next week then is a really busy week for you. On the 4th, you're going to have a significant workshop with Parks on capital and planning and the vision for parks, followed by on the 5th, the groundbreaking for the building. And then the joint workshop and tour with the Parks Commission to see some of the parks and actually go out on a tour and take a look at those. And then on the 6th, we're going down to Bell Plain. It had been suggested that we meet with some of the communities and go out to the community. And they have a list of five or six things that they'd like to take the board to and then share a sandwich with, I think, before we do that down at the city hall. So that is on June 6th. The other thing is the annual performance report has been completed. And this is Chris Harder's first year of doing it, taking it over from Judith. I think she has even a vision for a little more change moving forward. But Troy Pint, Sarah Deppi, Lori McMillan, Mary Keen, and Evan Cole have taken this and worked on it and put a lot of time into preparing it for you. So I hope you will take a look at it, review it, and give us some thoughts back. It is the report that will be presented to you at the June meeting that we then send up to the state auditor for some of the funding that we get back to do some of these types of activities. And so I think with that, that was everything that I wanted to chat about.
Thank you. Mr. Zettler, thanks for being with us today.
No update from the county attorney.
All right. It sounds like we are going to recess for a, a closed meeting though, to discuss and consider labor negotiation strategies for all bargaining units.
That is correct.
So we will recess for that meeting. We will reconvene to adjourn the meeting following that closed session. Thank you. No action was taken. That was our final item on the agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Meeting adjourned.